We're just waiting for the livestream. Bon après-midi tout le monde. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our meeting on November 29th. I'd like to call our meeting to order, sorry, November 28th, 2022. Should be reading my notes here. Before proceeding to the agenda, we have invited Grandmother Irene to assist us in opening our meeting. I will invite Grandmother Irene to meet me at the podium.
Irene? Yeah?
Can you hear?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for opening this meeting for us today. It means very much to me. It's my first time chairing the board. And we have some new members and I'm the chief here, so I'm very happy that you're with us today.
It's my honour to be here. All right.
And I understand that the chief has already given you the tobacco.
Yes. Yes, the chief of police has given me that offering of tobacco. And when we give that offering of tobacco, it's because we want to ask for something from Creator or we want to thank Creator for something. So I'm going to ask Creator to help us in our meeting tonight to create a sacred space so that everyone is equal and everyone is listening and everyone is gathering their thoughts and creating a new vision. So I'm going to go around that medicine wheel. First of all, I'm going to start with the smudge. So I'd like a male from the audience. Don't be shy. All you have to do is light a match. Why we ask the men to do it is because they are the spark of life. And the women, they are the givers of life, so they represent the water. So I'm going to light this medicine. And as soon as we light that medicine, that's when we invite those ancestors in. And so we're going to cleanse our minds so that we have clarity and understanding. And we're going to cleanse our ears so that we will listen with intent. And we're going to cleanse our eyes so that we can see a new future for the people that protect us and also the community. And we also cleanse our mouth so that we be respectful to say good things to one another. And we make that connection from our heart to our Creator. And I like to cleanse my tummy because that's where all your emotions sit. So I just want you to check in with your emotions and get yourself grounded because if there's any scattered emotions, we just want to take those scattered emotions and we want to ground ourselves to Mother Earth so that we can be truly present for one another. Normally, I would sing a song, but today Grandma's got a cold, so I don't want to hack all over the place. Anyway, I want you to imagine that medicine wheel. That medicine wheel represents many layers of teachings. And one of the teachings that it represents is equality. Those four nations of people in that medicine wheel, in that eastern direction, it's Middle Eastern and Asian. And in the southern directions, all the indigenous. And in that western direction is all the black nations. And in that northern direction is all the white nations. And so we invite all of those nations to be within our gathering tonight. And especially, I want you to think about your ancestors. We all have ancestors and we all have wisdom from those ancestors. And we're going to call them in through that medicine wheel, through that eastern doorway. When we get up in the morning, we put our feet on the ground. We offer our day up to Creator. And we ask Creator to give us a good day. And we thank Creator for another day on our earthwalk because life is so sacred. And we also ask Creator to give us those seven grandfather teachings or whatever teachings you have in your culture. We carry those teachings inside ourselves and we use those teachings in our relationships with everyone every day. And so I ask you to think about those teachings right now as well and bring them to this gathering. So in that eastern doorway, that's where the eagle sits. And the eagle is the one that takes our prayers to Creator because it flies closest to the Creator. And so I want you to think about the biggest desire in your heart right now. And I want you to put them on the wings of that eagle. And you can see that eagle soaring towards Creator with your prayers on its wings. And in that southern direction, that's where the youth sit. We always acknowledge our youth because they are the leaders of the next seven generations. And we know that there are youth that are struggling. And they're still in what we call the wandering year. So they're still trying to find their place in the world, where they belong and, you know, what is my purpose in life, they often ask themselves. So we pray for those youth, but we also pray for the wellbeing, the leadership, and the confidence of our youth because they are the ones that really make the changes. And it's the way it is in our cultures. So in that western direction, that's where the bear sits. And that bear represents courage. In the forest, if there is a bear with her cubs, she will stand up and fight for her cubs if someone comes near. So that bear represents protection. And I often like to think of Ottawa Police Services as that protection. And the bear is good with the people. So we want good relationships to be established, to be built over time, to honour that courage and honour that protection. And the bear also represents tenacity. They make things happen. They make action happen, but in a good way. So I ask for the spirit of that bear to be within our gathering here this evening. And in that last direction, that's where all the elders sit. That's where I sit right now. Someday, I'm going to go home to Creator, but I hope not too long from now. I feel like it today, though. Anyway, that's where the elders sit. And also, that's where the wolf sits. So I acknowledged all the different spirit animals in those four directions. And in that northern direction, that's where the wolf sits. And if you have a dog or a puppy, you'll understand that humility because sometimes they'll come to you with their head down. And it's not a humility in a bad way. It's humility in a good way. To have that humility and leadership is to be a great leader. So we acknowledge that courage and that humility. And in that eastern direction is the love. And in that southern direction is truth. So I ask all those ancestors to come into our gathering. And I would just like to say chimigwetch. Thank you for asking me to come and create sacred space for you so that you can have a good meeting. And my prayers for you are to listen with intent and to move forward in a good way. So I'm going to say chimigwetch, 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 chimigwetch. Aho. You can clap, too.
I wish we could have Grandmother Irene here with us every meeting. That was really beautiful. Thank you again. Before proceeding to the agenda, I want to recognise that Ottawa is located on unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishnabi Host Nation. The peoples of the Algonquin Anishnabi Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The Ottawa Police Services Board honours the peoples and the land of the Algonquin Anishnabi Nation. Today, Ottawa is home to approximately 40,000 First Nations, Inuit and Métis people. Ottawa's indigenous community is diverse, representing many nations, languages and customs. The Ottawa Police Services Board honours all First Nations, Inuit and Métis people and their valuable past and present contributions to this land. We have a new few faces around the table. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome our new mayor and board member Mark Sutcliffe as well as our new police chief Eric Stubbs. Welcome. On behalf of my board members, we are very much looking forward to working with both of you to ensure adequate and effective policing in the city of Ottawa. Prior to this public meeting, we held our in-camera meeting. The board discussed a legal update, a matter involving service complaints, a delay application and legal correspondence. I will now proceed with the confirmation of the agenda. Confirmation of the agenda. That the Ottawa Police Service Board confirm the agenda of the 28th of November 2022 meeting? Is the agenda confirmed? Thank you. Confirmation of minutes. Minutes number 65 of 31st October 2022. That the Ottawa Police Service Board confirm minutes number 65 of October 31st, 2022? Are the minutes confirmed? Thank you. We'll now proceed to our committee meetings. Reports from committee chairs and minutes. Finance and Audit Committee, draft minutes number 18 of 10 November 2022. Member Currie, I believe you will be providing a brief update on the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. So over to you.
Thank you. On the 10th, the Finance and Audit Committee met to discuss the development of the 2023 budget. The service provided a presentation which highlighted various priorities for the budget, the current context, a couple of different budget scenarios and draft budget timelines. The committee had a good discussion around some of the pressures facing the service. There's also a request from the committee to have an additional FTE included for the board office to be funded from internal savings. In general, I think it was a good meeting and it was just the preliminary start to what will become many of our budget deliberations going forward.
Thank you, Member Currie. Are there any questions for Member Currie from the board members here? No? Okay, I see no questions. Therefore, we'll proceed to committee meetings, reports from... Oh, sorry, I'm a little bit confused here. Okay, sorry about that. Is this item received? Thank you. This is my first meeting chairing, so I'm a little bit the newbie here, the rookie, the rookie. Okay, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? None? Thank you. All right, we'll now proceed to our public delegations. Prior to proceeding with the first registered delegate, I do want to make a few comments on decorum and remind participants of the requirement to abide by our procedural guidelines. This includes refraining from using unparliamentary and offensive language as well as making allegations against members of the police service or even members of this board. It also means focusing your comments on the topic you signed up to speak on. I won't tolerate disrespectful language directed at anyone. Failure to follow these guidelines will result in your delegation being curtailed. The board has included regular public delegations as part of its business meetings and these are meant to be respectful and collaborative exchanges. I will now call on the first registered delegate and I will ask you to come and have a seat here in front of us. So I will call Ad Ollumid. And you are speaking, I believe, a motion on transparency by law for complaints against police. If you'd like to have a seat, Monsieur Ollumid. Thank you very much. Please proceed. You can turn your microphone on? Perfect. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will start by saying that I definitely have critics. That's without a doubt. But my critics have not been able to point at one thing that I have said that is false or untrue. So that raises certain questions. It was refreshing for me that just this Friday, I received a dignified letter from the Solicitor General. I say refreshing because normally people just act like you're just a black whatever, who doesn't know what he's talking about. The letter referred to an act which I wasn't aware of, the Community Safety and Policing Act, and explained its contents in reference to the suggestions that I made. Specifically, section 165 of that. Now, this act, as you all well know, is not enforced. I wasn't aware. Investigation concluded within 120 days. If the timing is not met, give notice every 30 days and enlist the people, including the complainants. Then 167-2 shall publish a de-identified summary on the internet. So I was shocked that the very thing that I've been asking the board to do is already planned action by the Ontario Government. So which begs the question what the reason for the delay is in terms of taking a vote and moving forward with something that the Ontario Government has already said they want to do. Now, I still have to respond because it's not perfect. It solves 50% of the issues, so I still have to respond to the letter. But I was shocked because each time I would write to the board, it would be as though, what are you talking about? But the Ontario Government had already identified the same concerns that I had raised and addressed the same solutions that I had proposed. In any event, welcome to the new chief. Of course, welcome to the new mayor. My hope is that we can turn a new page and do things differently. I will say that there is no need... Okay, put it this way. It's not my intent to offend, but I rather speak straight because, one, I can't rely on someone else to speak on my behalf. And there's going to be conversations where I'm not present. And there could be someone telling you to do something that's against the law. So if you don't hear from me directly, you may not fully understand or not be able to challenge or ask the right questions. So when I speak, it's not an intent to offend. It's just to explain so that you are armed with the information that you need in order to call for a vote and do what the Ontario Government already said they're going to do. So I'm going to read from Gosling, which is a Supreme Court decision. It talks about a positive right which is viable by inaction. So when I keep saying by inaction, it's a crime, I'm not just speaking off the top of my head. I'll read it again from another decision. Organizations, so we can replace that with the Police Services Board or the police, have an obligation to be aware whether their practices or their policies result in systemic discrimination. An organisation violates the code, whether directly or indirectly, intentionally or unintentionally, authorises or condones or adopts or ratifies behaviour that's contrary to the code. So when I say to someone that's a racist decision or that's, you know, wow, I'm not racist. Well, based on this test, if there's a racist thing that happened before, anything that's done by another someone else, whether the person is black or white, to further that prior racist act is racism. Criminal Code, section 21. Everyone is party to an offence who omits to do anything. So when I say not passing a transparency bylaw so that the police can cover up existing complaints is a crime, it's not me who said it. I'm reading. Omits to do anything. Anything is a broad word. There's a legal test for anything. Under 22.2, knowing that a representative is about to be party to an offence does not take all reasonable measures, not some reasonable measures, all reasonable measures, to stop them. I'm sure some of you are familiar with section 23, assist to escape. Section 341, for fraudulent purpose conceals anything.
Your time is up. If you'd like to wrap up, please.
Well, I knew this would happen. I talk too much. But I'll say this in closing and I hope I have some questions because then that could give me a chance to respond. But on a personal note, I'm a straight shooter, okay? I don't understand. People who rise to the level of police chief obviously have immaculate careers, have not been involved in any misconduct. So I don't understand why people would get to the highest level of the career and allow any situation that would allow them to be linked to the covering up of misconduct by bad officers. To me, legacy is more important. What I'm asking the board to do is not just a precedent for Ottawa. There's 237 law enforcement organisations across the country. There's organisations in the US. So what I'm asking you to do today is not just save lives, but what you could do is something that the RCMP could copy, something that the OPP could copy. I'm meeting with the Toronto City Council just this week, but I would like my city to be the first. And I'll just close on this last five seconds.
Thank you.
And that is to say that... And that is to say that what I'm asking to be done, the chief has power to do it and the board has power to do it.
Thank you. Merci beaucoup. Thank you for your deliberation. Thank you. Do we have any questions from our board members or comments for Mr. Ollumid? Yes, Member Currie?
Yeah, Adi, when you've sent us emails, is that what you just said there in them? I've read through so many of the emails you've sent and I'm just wondering if this newest information, have you sent us an email on it where I can get a link and read some of the stuff you've just explained?
I received this on Friday, so I will send that later this week. The new letter that I got from Solicitor General, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? No? Merci beaucoup. Thank you very much, Mr. Ollumid. Thank you.
And I apologise for over speaking with that.
All right. Our next invited guest here is Joe Regis. Joe, are you here? Good. Come on and have a seat in front of us, Joe. You have five minutes? Go ahead. It's all yours. The floor is yours.
Yes, indeed. I don't think I will need the five minutes because my issue is pretty brief and straight to the point. And thank you for welcoming me here today. And thank you to all of you and the new mayor and the new chief and all the officers for the good work that you have been doing on behalf of the community. So I want to speak to the issues of complaints and transparency. More specifically, to the fact that we need a business process within the city of Ottawa to make the information available. Yeah, to make the information available to citizens of Ottawa and interstate groups as well so that they know exactly what is going on and so that we can prevent some issues from occurring and also to find solutions together. The police board, the officers and the community to work together to find solutions to the challenges that the city is facing. So now, more specifically to the point is that I would like, I urge the board to work command to the police department to set up a transparency, complaint and transparency portal to make all the data available in terms of how many complaints we receive, how many calls we receive per year, per month, whatever the distributions would be. And out of those complaints, how many hours, how many use of force, how many incidents, how many administrative complaints that resulted from those complaints? And of course, it's not only about complaints. And if citizens of Ottawa want to command and officers as well, we need a special site where they can place, command an officer for the work that they are doing. And in fact, some of, I know there are some constraints. There are some challenges to making that technology available to citizens. But I think we can work around it to prevent some of the issues related to related complaints against an officer or something to that nature. So I think we can work around it to work with the community within the police department so that we can face some of the challenges that the city is facing.
Thank you very much. I will ask my board members if they have any questions or comments. Yes, Member Currie?
Thank you for that. I'm just wondering, do you have any examples in Ontario of other forces that have done that very thing with the portal?
To my understanding, in some of the cities of the United States state, specifically specific portals or hub in relation to complaints and transparency, it's clearly highlighted what's need to be done. It's just the technology can be daunting, but it can be achieved. So now, I don't think this is something that we need a bylaw to be implemented to do it. I think it can be part of the city policy so that the information is available. And ultimately, I think we can get something like that across the province through the legislature. And if you need additional information, I can send you more informations on that and some of the best practices that are there.
That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it would be a good idea if you sent the information to Krista and that way she can share it with the rest of us.
Absolutely.
Chief, would you, Chief Stubbs, would you like to say something on this matter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir, for your comments. We do submit our complaints and that sort of data every quarter to the board. And then there's sort of an annual report completed as well. And I believe it might be part of the board, on the board reports that you publish online. But perhaps it's not as detailed as maybe it could be or it's not as accessible as it could be. So certainly getting your feedback on what you think of that and how it looks, perhaps we can change or tweak those numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. Because the goal, the ultimate goal is not opening data if nobody can find the data.
Right.
And if we don't know what it means, so the data need to be available to citizens so that everybody know what the issues, what the challenges are and ultimately, solutions can be found together.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you, man.
Welcome. Well, there are no other questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Regis, for your deliberation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker this evening is Mandy P. Would you like to come forward, Mandy, and have a seat here in front of us? And the floor is yours.
Hello?
Okay, great.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome, Chief Stubbs. I'm coming here in this space today as a board member for Octiva, the Ottawa Coalition to End Violence Against Women, and in light of sixteen days of activism to end gender-based violence and to remind folks in the city of the injustice of gender-based violence. And despite the fact that the stats paint a gruesome picture of increasing violence and femicide, we continue to minimise and dismiss it. We know that in two thousand and twenty-one, one hundred and seventy-three women and girls were killed from gender-based violence. We know that globally, one in three women experience physical or sexual violence in their lifetime. And just today, the Ontario Association of Interval Houses releases two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two annual feminist list. And the picture is grim. Fifty-two women and girls were killed in fifty-two weeks in Ontario last year. The pre-pandemic, a femicide happened every six days in Canada, and this increased to two point five days in two thousand and twenty. And now, here in Ontario, it is every single day. In Ottawa, we have seen the tragic and unjust loss of too many women and girls like Savannah, Piquayac and Jasmine and Anne-Marie Reddy. Gender-based violent cases in Canada make up nearly one-third of police-reported violent incidents. And when survivors reach out to OPS, the response often leads to little justice or accountability. And only fourteen percent of domestic violent reports to OPS resulted in charges laid in two thousand and twenty. Compare this to the two thousand and nineteen national self-reported data, there was only thirty-two percent of survivors across Canada that said that their report led to a charge. Ottawa's charge rate is less than half of the national average. Meanwhile, data shows that only zero point zero zero three percent of sexual assaults in Canada result in a conviction, in a conviction. And that only three assailants are convicted per one thousand. So Chief Stubbs, when you say that the police force is not broken, we agree with you. It is working exactly by design. Policing was not designed to prevent gender-based violence. Policing is failing survivors. And for a very long time, the police have been responding to gender-based violence and domestic violence, and the key word here is respond. Because that is exactly what the police do, is that they respond. Because by design, policing is reactive that does nothing to prevent and protect women from experiencing harm in the first place. So survivors need more and better options. And it's very interesting that when we start to talk about alternatives to policing, because there is alternatives to policing when members of the public decide to turn to their communities for support and safety and not the police. And one of the questions that is often asked is how will we protect victims and survivors if we de-task and defund the police? So for folks who don't know, this is a very simple ask. Detasking means removing what falls in the area of police responsibility. Defunding means reducing the police budget and reinvesting those funds into neighbourhoods, community-based groups and social services to prevent violence and help people flourish in the first place. So how will we protect victims and survivors if we de-task and defund the police? This is, the very question is based on a myth that the police are currently protecting victims and survivors. And the very limited gender-based violence and violence against women survivors report to police that in two thousand and nineteen, only twenty percent of survivors of partner violence and only six percent of survivors of sexual assaults are reported to police in Canada. So we understand here that the policing comes too late, and no wonder survivors don't report. But not, not only this, is how can we expect survivors to report to police when we know how widespread violence against women and gender-based violence is within policing? Research has showed us that police officers are disproportionately represented in domestic and intimate partner violence as aggressors, and that the second complaint made to SIU after excessive use of force is sexual assault. We also cannot deny the culture of misogyny, harassment and bullying in the policing ranks. We can agree with you here, Chief Stubbs, that you are right, again, that the, the police force is not broken. We have witnessed your own members who have harmed their own fellow officers and exploited survivors who have turned to the police for help. We have read taxpaying funded reports over and over again about the sexual violence that is happening behind your own forces' closed doors. And when we look at these stats, it shows no surprise that many survivors of violence do not trust the police with their experiences. And no, this is, this isn't a case of a few bad apples or a few rogue cops doing bad things and corrupt, corrupt things. This is a system working as designed. So survivors want justice, something that the police is inherently and systematically unable to offer. And I recommend you that you review a semi, semi-annual OPS charge rates for sexual violence and partner violence. Is the investment in OPS worth the outcomes they provide for women, transgender diverse folks, safety? Or is it, or is this investment better spent in communities? So there are few resources invested in our communities for prevention-based approaches that address the root causes of violence, you know, stopping it before it happens. So please support the calls to de-task and defund. Because just like every other issue, and the police would agree here, is that we cannot police ourselves out of gender-based violence. And I want to say, I want to end by saying that a wise person once said that we ask for safety, but you gave us police. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. I guess, did anybody have any questions for Mandy or comments? You do? Mandy, can you come back, please? Member Leaper, the floor is yours.
And a few years ago, women's groups began in partnership with the police, the, the process of case review model after the Philadelphia model. Has that resulted in improved, I'm trying to figure out how best to put it, has it resulted in better or improved outcomes? And, and can you give us a flavour for what they have been finding with case review? Like, has there been a significant number of cases that have been brought back for reinvestigation? Because I've kind of lost track of where case review was gone, and it was an intriguing model when, when first implemented.
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I can't be answering any questions on behalf of Octiva, but I could say that in two thousand and twenty, I believe the global news was actually doing an investigation into the reports by Canadian sexual assault cases. And what they found was that majority of those cases were unfounded, and there was a lot of processes in there that were not being followed up with, with the police. So I'm just going to leave it there, but yeah.
I'll talk with Sunny.
Yeah, I just, just being mindful of who I represent today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? No? Thank you, Mandy. Our next delegate is Bailey Gucci. Would you like to come forward, Bailey, please? Have a seat. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thanks for having me again. Okay, so I'm going to stand because I'm really short, and it's just easier for me to see y'all again. Y'all know me, you're new. Hi, you're new. Hi, I come here frequently. Okay, so I just had two questions. One for your worship. Did you watch any of the meetings of the PSB prior to this? And same for Stubbs and Chief Stubbs, like, did you also watch our PSB? Because it's like, you're brand new here. Like, did you do your research? Did you do your homework?
So Bailey, we appreciate your questions, and we understand that these things are important for you.
Yeah.
But it's not this kind of form, format right now, where you ask a question and we answer.
I did get approved to ask these questions.
Yes.
So I'm just like, you don't have to answer. I know the rules. You don't have to dialogue with me, but I do want to propose, did you watch last meeting? Stubbs, did you watch last meeting? I'm the reason why there's a warning at the beginning of the meeting.
So.
Because I use unparliamentary language.
So are those your two questions?
Correct.
Okay, so let me ask then the board members if they have any questions for you or comments, okay? You can leave your microphone on if you want.
Do you mind if I just go to the bathroom real quick?
Oh, sure.
Sorry, I'm so sorry about this.
No problem. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Yes, we will. Okay, well, while Bailey is doing what Bailey's doing, we're going to move to Sam Hirsch, our next delegate. Sam, would you like to come down, please? If you'd like to have a seat? The floor is yours, Sam.
Sam, okay.
We can hear you nice and clear.
Great, thank you. So hello, bonjour et bienvenue au nouveau membre, Sir Sutcliffe, et Chef Stubbs. Vous rejoignez sans aucune doute. La commission a un moment sérieux où beaucoup de résidents et résidantes commencent enfin à se rendre compte que le bon nombre des problèmes auxquels nous sommes confrontés, liés à la criminalité, ne peuvent pas être traités de manière adéquate avec la police. Et recherche un changement, faire des alternatives qui se concentrent sur les soins et la compassion, pas de la force brute. First, Mr. Sutcliffe, congratulations on your victory. And despite our disagreements and at times very questionable accusations during the campaign trail, I, I do truly hope that you rethink your campaign promise to significantly increase the city's police budget and your plan for a, a police centre in the Byward market. Where there is already a heavy police presence, probably more so than any other area in the city. And a police station just kilometres away, as we said earlier. If you truly hope to make the market the jewel of the city, as, as you said, then I suggest and encourage you to make investments in things like pedestrian infrastructure and actual services to help unhoused residents there. Using police to just shoo homeless folks away, like we've seen recently with the Hope encampment on, on Rideau, hasn't worked and will only exacerbate the issue our, our entire city faces. Mayor Sutcliffe, this is your chance to start anew. As you said in your inaugural address, the election campaign is over. And it is time to find solutions that will be amenable to all people across this city, not just those who are of a certain base in this city. Second, I want to address the issue of hybrid meetings, which has come up multiple times in last year. Last week, we again made another call to the board to shift back to allowing options to attend these meetings virtually. The answers reported in the media from this board were quite frankly unacceptable. Especially the assertion that this board did not have enough time to deal with the issue and spoke about the need to push this issue to the next board, while at the same time were able to find time to push forward the last-minute appointment of a new chief, which was highly scrutinised by folks in the city. It was said that it would require several meetings for this to change to be made, but, but we brought this up at almost every single meeting when this happened, and asked the former chair if he'd look into it, and we seldom heard back on this issue, but when it came to hiring the new chief, that was no problem at all. Again, I'm, I'm asking you to heavily consider making this change, and once there is a new chair, to convince them to do so as an indication to a renewal of trust in this board and, and to the community, as, as we said. This is an easy change and one that most boards and committees do anyways. So there's the excuse around the lack of resources or the procedural bylaw is not an adequate one. It shows a lack of priority towards residents and accessibility. I ask you to reconsider your position, us here as well as the community, but thank you for it. Lastly, I'd like to touch on the appointment of our, of our new chief. You know, to be frank, and I'm speaking to the board here, I'm worried about this appointment. No offence to you, chief. I'm happy to be proven wrong, but, but based on this chief's track record and as well as recent comments of the media in the last week, I, I don't have much faith right now. Chief, your comments about the, the Ottawa Police Service not being broken and is doing a great job in the community were quite frankly very troubling for me and many others I spoke to across this city who had to experience firsthand the traumatic events of the occupation of Ottawa by the far right, especially in the wake of the Public Order Emergency Committee. To make such comments at a time like this, when trust is so low in our institutions, it's truly a nod or insinuation that there is little that needs to be scrutinised. And we just heard months of testimony about how infighting in the police force led to weeks of harassment and traumatic events, particularly for downtown and equity-seeking residents. I recommend you to rethink that sentiment, chief, and especially in light of news that a new convoy may soon take over our city and hope that you treat that seriously. And obviously, as others have brought up here, as others have brought up in recent weeks, that, you know, the fact that this chief played a pivotal role in the raids on Watzuudan territory is troubling to people across this territory and leads me to ask members of this board why they made this choice. When the Union of VC Indian Chiefs president says he thinks this board made a poor choice, I have serious concerns about the judgment of this board. And again, questions as to why the choice was made and the commitment to true reconciliation. As recently as two years ago, there was a big protest against the police budget led by Black and Indigenous youth, and was violently handled. How am I supposed to believe that this chief was hired to improve the way an event like that was handled? And by, and by improved, I don't mean to clamp down more effectively. Members of this board, I, I hope that in this term, the focus shifts away from clamping down on the criticism and dissent of the police force, and actually shifts to your important role of keeping the police force accountable to residents of the city. That is what your job is. As the description of a board member's job in the, in the Board Policy Manual clearly states, your role exists to represent the public interest, not to protect the interests and reputation of the Ottawa Police. We expect your actions and decisions to reflect that in this new term. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Are there any questions or comments from our board members here? No? Thank you, Sam. Our next delegate is Robin Brown. Robin, if you'd like to come and have a seat up front, yes? Well, there there's one more person after you. You don't want to speak now? Is there any particular reason why you want to do that? All right, okay. Well, in that case, Farnaz Farhang, would you like to come down and speak with us? Please have a seat. You can turn the microphone on, and the floor.
Good afternoon. First, I want to begin by thanking Miranda, who I'm not, are you Miranda? Thank you for squeezing me last minute. With the board's refusal to accommodate a hybrid model for delegations, it's hard to coordinate work schedules and showing up to speak in person as a public delegate. And I've read some of the comments that the interim che, Chair made about how it's the board's procedural bylaws to not have them virtual. But I guess that doesn't account for exceptions, like when you did have a virtual meeting when rushing to hire a new police chief. Or the fact that the live stream is still being facilitated through Zoom. So I had signed up to speak to two agenda items, items nine point eight and nine point eleven. But just to keep it within the time limit, I'm going to try and put it all together. So item number nine point eight is the annual report for human rights and racial profiling. I think before this board can begin having discussions about human rights and racial profiling and just general injustice issues and creating solutions for these issues, you have to look at the space and people who are carrying that discussion. Delegates who have shown up to these meetings along with the lessons that we've learned from Black and Indigenous elders and feminists, liberation leaders have all highlighted that the issues of policing are embedded in the institution itself. So there's no amount of EDI consulting that's going to solve something that is serving a very specific function. I'm going to use a timely example. We are in the sixteen days of awareness and activism around gender-based violence, where we're supposed to be thinking about how to prevent and intervene in these far-too-after-tragic situations. We need to have that discussion while also highlighting that the coercive, manipulative and controlling culture of colonial institutions and governance are some of the same patterns that you see in intimate partner violence, intimate terrorism and other forms of family violence that are grounded on coercion and controlling people. Many researchers and people with lived experience of both gender-based violence and police violence have highlighted that tactical police training, as well as their interrogation techniques or maintaining compliance, are also perpetuating the exact same behaviour. We see this in how just a few months ago, we were at one of these meetings to hear a new plan for the OPS's toxic work culture. We can't have this discussion, it's too important to have it in five minutes, but we also can't have any of these discussions relating to human rights, inequities, brutality and the violence that accompanies them, or construct solutions when people perpetuating state-sanctioned abuse are at the tables with guns and uniforms. Or when the people at the table without guns and uniforms are still comfortable with this use of coercive control. We can't have these discussions when people at the table have been complicit in the colonial practice of the control of people and land, like, for example, evicting people out of their homes to appease developer interests. Or unleashing police forces onto a sovereign nation to arrest the stewards of those lands and journalists. I'm here to ensure that it's on record that evidence-based policy and solutions are not going to be created in these spaces and spaces where police are part of the table. I urge decision-makers, specifically those on city council and our new mayor, to remember that Ottawa's Community Safety and Well-being Plan has explicitly asked for a non-police alternative to help intervene with gender-based violence. And that must be different than the mental health alternative that was unfortunately and predictably co-opted and stripped away from the original ask of a community members who actually asked for a non-carceral approach for people in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Farnaz. Are there any questions or comments for Farnaz? Not at this time? No. Thank you very much, Farnaz. Thank you. All right, Robin, you're up. It's your turn, if you'd like to come to the table. All right, Robin, you're up. It's your turn, if you'd like to come to the table. Please have a seat.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
So myself and other public delegates, as you know, speak almost every board meeting and every month the same thing happens. You board members listen to our five-minute delegations, ask most of us no questions and continue to do the exact opposite of what almost every public delegate asked you to do, including approving multimillion dollar budget increases for the Ottawa Police Service. You also hired a new chief despite calls to wait until after the municipal election. And you didn't just hire any guy to replace chiefs slowly. You hired the guy who led the B C R C M P's operation to violently remove Wausau people protesting a pipeline being built under land. So just to be clear, you replaced the black guy who from day one faced racist resistance from within the force for making real change. The black guy who then got forced out using the racist narrative leaked by unnamed OPS sources that he's incompetent, aggressive and heavy-handed. You replaced that black guy with this white guy with a track record of being aggressive and heavy-handed with Indigenous protesters.
Robin, I'm gonna ask you to be more respectful.
Yeah, no problem. So, we're done. We're done doing delegations only in person because you refuse to hold hybrid meetings despite the barriers that create for people, especially already marginalized people participating in the meetings. We're done being instructed, as we were so many times, by former board El Shantieri and by you tonight, to say anything we want, as long as we're respectful and don't exercise our democratic right to critique board members or members of the Ottawa Police Service. We're done being ignored while you continue to ignore basic democratic principles. So this evening, things are going to happen a little differently. But before I explain what I mean by that, let me highlight some other issues with the OPS that reinforce why you should be freezing their budget instead of giving the OPS the large increase that we no doubt that we think they'll ask for. The number one reason is that last year, the OPS's own stats showed that less than 1% OPS calls were priority one. Meaning calls about violent or potentially violent crime. That means that the other 99% of the time, OPS officers were doing things like directing traffic, babysitting construction sites or going to mental health calls where the people they're supposed to help sometimes end up dead. Your responsibility is to ensure Ottawa has adequate and effective policing and cops doing all that stuff is clearly neither. Another reason you should be freezing the OPS budget is what happened to former chief Slowly. Now, as you know, or people who've been here for a while, we in the hub weren't big fans of the former chief in the later part of his term and critique many of his actions each month. However, we never accused him of being incompetent. In fact, I personally praised and even defended Slowly in his early days for some of the things he did. One of those things was how he handled Ottawa's Black Lives Matter protest in the summer of 2020. I was in that protest with thousands of others, mostly white folks, this is Ottawa after all, from the beginning to the very end and didn't see one police officer the entire time. The protest was entirely peaceful with no visible police presence to cause tension. The day after that protest, we met with chief Slowly and praised him for what we found out was the result of his plan, which OPS members and members of all other police forces followed. Then came the Freedom Convoy occupation. With thousands, again, almost all white people involved in an illegal occupation, which become clear that the OPS and other police forces didn't follow chief Slowly's plan, including his demand for eighteen hundred more officers until after Slowly resigned. And as I already said, unnamed OPS sources justified Slowly's resignation using the racist narrative that he was incompetent and aggressive. This was truly a public lynching of a black man, about which Deputy Chief Bell has remained tellingly silent.
Robin, although I appreciate your comments, my notes here tell me that you wanted to talk to us about how to rebuild community trust. Is that coming?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
And while we're on the top of the silence, this board has attempted to silence criticism of its own actions and those of the OPS by continuing to ban virtual public delegations. Then you ignore those of us who do delegate in person by doing things like hiring a new chief based on a highly flawed recruitment and community engagement process. How odd was it? Well, the company you hired to lead the community engagement process, Hefford Solutions, is owned by Hector Addison, who's a longtime member of the OPS Community Equity Council that Deputy Chief Steve Bell co-chairs. D C Bell is also on the Board of Crime Prevention in Ottawa that gave Hefford Solutions a $50,000 contract. This is a problem because it's a direct conflict of interest. It's also a problem because Ottawa's Crown Attorney recently charged Hector Addison with forgery. The 613819 Hub submitted a report to Ottawa Police Service asking them to charge Addison with forgery, but the OPS said they couldn't because the charge of forgery, quote, "There needs to be benefit gained," unquote. The 613819 Black Hub then launched a private prosecution that led the Crown Attorney to charge Addison with forgery.
You've reached your five minutes.
Oh, well, actually, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, can you close, please?
No, actually, I can't. So that's what I mentioned about things are gonna be a little differently tonight. Tonight, we're gonna be asking the questions and we're not leaving until you answer them. We're gonna follow in the footsteps of Dr. Martin Luther King and engage in some good old non-violent, civil disobedience. So just to be clear, we're gonna be non-violent, civil and disobedient, all right? While the local, national and international media are watching on. So now I'm gonna ask my colleague Bailey to come over here and read you four questions and we're not leaving until you answer them.
Robin, your time is up now. Do you'd like to take your seat back, please?
Have you not heard me? We're not leaving until you answer our questions.
Well, this is my meeting. I'm chairing this meeting and I'm asking you very politely and respectfully.
Oh, I'm being very respectful, but we're not leaving until you answer the questions.
We have a board meeting. We have reports that we have to table today. This is how we do business. So I will ask the two of you. Let me actually, let me ask my board members first, okay? Let's do this in a democratic way. Does anybody have any? Does anybody have any questions or comments for our two last delegations?
For the board, I'll be quick, I'll be quick. Will this board agree to immediately start holding hybrid meetings that allow virtual as well as in-person delegations? Number two, your worship, new mayor, please, this is for you. One of our campaign promises was to do a line-by-line financial audit of all city services. Will that audit include the Ottawa Police? Number three, for the board, will you freeze the Ottawa Police Service budget until after the financial audit is complete? Number four, for the board, will you commission an independent, human rights-based review of the Ottawa Police Service like the one that the Ottawa Carlton District School Board did of its school resource officers program? Okay?
Okay, thank you very much, the two of you. Perfect. You can leave them with Miranda, if you'd leave them with Miranda. Thank you. All right.
So I'm just gonna repeat myself a third time. I'm not leaving here. Questions?
We already went through the board members and asked them if they had any questions or comments for you. You said your piece. You signed up knowing that you had five minutes to speak. Now you've done, you're done. You've said what you had to say. We gave you more time. Yes, you do. I know that. I know that. But now we need to get on with our meeting. So this is the last time I'm going to ask you, please.
I will respectfully repeat myself. I'm not leaving this chair until you answer our questions.
I'm sorry, but at this point in time, the delegation period of our meeting is over.
Understood.
So this is the last time I'm gonna ask you. Please, with all due respect.
And I repeat, with all due respect, I'm not leaving this chair until you answer our questions.
Well, you leave me no option. All right, I've been asked that we take a five-minute break, all right? So everybody can stretch their legs and we'll be back here at ten after five, all right? Thank you, everyone. This one right here, right?
Yes. Ignoring that. Yep. I've got it. Yes.
All right, so we're going to item 9.5, Appointment and Reappointment of Special Constables. Okay, all right. Scratch that. Let's go to 9.4, Board Committee Appointments. Executive Directors Report: That the Ottawa Police Services Board approved the appointment of Mayor Sudcliff, Member Sudcliff, to the Policy and Governance Committee and the Human Resources Committee. Is this item carried? Carried, thank you. All right, 9.5, Appointment and Reappointment of Special Constables, Carleton University. That the Ottawa, this is a chief's report, that the Ottawa Police Services Board approved the appointments of Carleton University employees listed in Document 1 and the reappointment of Carleton University employee listed in Document 2 as special constables pursuant to Section 53 of the Police Services Act in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the attached Approval of Appointment forms. Is the item carried? Carried, thank you very much, board members. One more. 9.6, Appointment and Reappointment of Special Constables, Ottawa Police... Sorry, okay. I told you I was a rookie tonight. All right, 9.7, Appointment of Special Constables, RCMP. Chiefs report once again that the Ottawa Police Services Board approved the appointment of five RCMP employees listed in Document 1 as special constables pursuant to Section 53 of the Police Services Act in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the attached Approval of Appointment forms. Is the item carried? Carried, thank you very much, appreciate that. Oh, excuse me, Member Dusset, yes?
Chair, I'd like to propose a motion to adjourn the meeting at this point.
All right. Do, board members, does everyone agree? Yes, carried? Thank you, Member Dusset.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, well, that concludes our meeting this evening. Thank you very much for coming.